Everyone to our August 17, 2023 briefing. And this will be the second briefing for our regular meeting that will take place on August 31. And the reason we have a two-week break is that a number of us will be at our North Carolina Association of County Commissioners State Convention next week. So before we begin our briefing today, we're going to get to recognize Ben Cook, who is the Forsyth County 4-H Council President. And I was taking it right up at the time, getting a chance to talk to him. He's going to represent our county next week at Youth Voice, which is held in conjunction with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Convention. And April Bowman, Cooperative Extension Agent, is going to actually introduce him. And I just had a great chance to talk to him. He's a wonderful young man and has got, it sounds like, a great future coming. And he's going to enjoy next week. April, thank you for being here.
Thank you. So Ben Cook is our Forsyth County 4-H Council President. He, like you said, will be attending Youth Voice and representing Forsyth County. We, he is very active in our 4-H electric program, as well as he just competed at the National Forestry Invitational in July, and they placed fourth in the nation. So we're very proud of that. He's also involved in a lot of science, technology, engineering, and math programming, as well as some poultry judging. So he's a very diverse young man. And in addition to leading our county council, he also is a leader for his 4-H, or a president of his 4-H club. So we're excited that he gets to attend Youth Voice with us, and we hope to see you next week.
You will.
That's good.
It's great.
Ben, great. It's all yours. Anything you'd like to say?
Well, I just want to thank you guys for allowing me to come to the Youth Voice. I'm excited to be there, and I'm excited to get to know you all and just spend the week with you. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Bye-bye.
All righty. We actually, today, we have one discussion I want to mention. I think we're going to do it first, second. We have two, sorry, we have two, and we're going to do those before we start.
You can do them.
Okay, great. We have an ARPA update with Ayesha Carter and Kimberly Price Shore. They're going to give us a little, and I think we actually got a report to that effect. And we're also going to hear from Shannon Hutchinson, Hutchins, my apologies, on the compensation for law enforcement and detention officers. So, all right, I'm looking for Ayesha. Let's see her. Showtime, right now, yeah. Here we go.
All right, good afternoon, county commissioners. We're here to give a brief update on where we are with ARPA. Ayesha Carter and Kimberly Shore, Compliance Manager. So in regards to the status of ARPA projects, we have 65 sub-receipients. And of the 65 sub-receipients, 63 are fully executed. We have agreements fully executed with them, and only two remain. One of them being NC Rush Triad Soccer Club, and their legal team is looking over the contract before we put it in contract control. And then the other one is the Highway 65 Waterline Extension Project, where bids are estimated for April 2024.
Ayesha.
Yes, ma'am.
Before you leave that, I guess can't tell you how disappointed I am in the rural hall highway water. Certainly not your fault. But when I learned last week that it's going to be 2025, before those folks have water, some of them have dry wells now, I just can't understand why that project is taking so long.
Yeah, I did listen to the briefing where Courtney came in, and I share your concern.
It is ridiculous. It really is. I'm sorry. Not your fault.
So next, we have reporting ARPA impact. We are working currently with our MIS team to add PDF impact reports to the dashboard, which you've previously seen, to share the impact quarterly with citizens and the public. Right now, we have four completed projects, 35 in progress projects, and 26 projects that have yet to draw down funds. And I do want to go into a little bit of detail about the four completed projects. So the first one is Old Man Ministries. Old Man Ministries of North Carolina was awarded $35,000 in ARPA funding to support its Veteran Homeless Housing Support Program, Housing for Our Heroes. With the funding, they were able to completely rehab a home on Thurman Street, which is the 27105 zip code, and house a homeless veteran. This is their 28th veteran that they were able to house due to funding. And they also partner with different agencies in the community that are committed to helping provide housing for veterans, as well as workforce development opportunities. Here's a before picture of the house on Thurman, and an after picture. Next, we have Clemens Food Pantry. So they was awarded $25,000 in ARPA funding to be used for their food program. With funds, they were able to distribute 300,000 pounds of food, serve an average of 1,800 individuals monthly, with 500 average households served. Due to COVID-19, Clemens Food Pantry did offer alternative methods to access food, and 17% of clients choose to use curbside pickup, ordering online, and prepackaged boxes versus the client-select method. Another thing I found unique about Clemens Food Pantry is that they partnered with five different agencies to reduce food loss, as well as increase hunger relief. Next, I have Senior Services. So they were awarded $2.5 million to construct a new intergenerational center for arts and wellness facility in Forsyth County, located on Shore Fair Drive near the fairgrounds. The building went under construction in July, and a ribbon-cutting and open house is set for November 17. So the work is not yet done, but Forsyth County contribution of ARPA funds is complete. And I do have several pictures to show the status of where they are. So I have the lot clearing, the concrete pour, and then drywall. And these are pictures, the most recent pictures I have. Next, I have Family Services. Family Services was awarded $500,000 to be used as down payment for a new daycare facility that will provide quality early education to 20 children ages 18 months to two years, as well as 72 children ages three to four years at 1430 Facility Lane. And that is off of Old Greensboro Road, near Petrie Elementary School. The building is now placed into service, and children is set to start in the end of August. I got some inside pictures of what that looks like. In the playground. And that's the update for the four completed projects. Now I'll turn it over to Kimberly Shore for a federal reporting update.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So as you know, I do the site visits, and I do all the compliance for the sub-receipients. I have done several site visits, well, more than several, almost over half, all of round one, and now working on round two. The Recovery Plan Performance Report, I hope you guys received it. I think Ashley said she dispersed it to you. We did turn it into the federal government, the Treasury module, and we have not received any feedback, so hopefully they won't have any questions, or send an auditor for us. So that is complete. And the funds being dispersed as of June 30, the amount that was, has, that has been dispersed is $30,313,567. We also have a breakdown for you if you need it. Do we hand that out?
I can hand it out.
Yeah, we will hand that out to you. It shows each sub-recipient and how much they have actually spent, and a percentage. So I think you guys are used to that report. It may be a little small, so we apologize for that. We were trying to cram it all in three to four pages. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Kimberly?
Yes. Please remind me again, what's the deadline for expenditure of the funds?
December 31, 2024.
Thank you.
Unless it's capital.
Unless it's capital, yes. Unless it is capital, they do have, as long as it is allocated and obligated, yes.
So the water line will get paid for?
Yes.
That's way off in the future. If it, it's way off in the future when it's done. Other questions?
Any other questions?
Thank you both.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. And now we have Shannon Hutchins.
Ashley knows I'm going to struggle. That's why she got up immediately without me asking. Thank you.
You're welcome.
During the fiscal year 2024 budget process, the board approved $2.8 million for pay plan changes, a special compensation study for law enforcement and detention positions as a result of recent hiring rate increases in the comparable market, and extended the $5,000 sign-on bonus for detention officers through, or detention personnel through December 2023. Also want to make a note here that previously the board adopted retention bonuses for existing detention staff in the total amount of $5,000. The first of those bonuses were paid out last October, and the final bonus of $2,500 will be paid out this October.
Do you know how many people will qualify for that roughly?
For the retention bonus, I don't have that number.
For the second payment.
I don't have that number write-off, but I can email that to you as soon as I get back to my office. So in July of 2023, PTRC, the Piedmont Triad Regional Council, began the special market study, which consisted of counties and municipalities in the Piedmont area and statewide. The study was completed in August. The data shows that our starting salary for deputy is not competitive, and starting salaries for detention officer are marginally competitive. PTRC also reviewed incentives, which includes relevant experience, higher education, and military service. The current incentives were deemed competitive. The pay rate for Deputy 1 is currently a grade 103, with a minimum hiring rate of $44,005. Based on the data from the study, staff recommends increasing the pay grade to a 106, with a minimum hiring rate of 51, 51.5, and adjusting Deputy 1 employee salary by 7.5%. On this slide, you can see a comparison of the current pay plan for deputy and the proposed pay plan. So Deputy 1, 2, and 3 would move up three pay grades in the proposed pay plan. The pay grade for Detention Officer 1 is currently a grade 103, with a minimum hiring rate of $44,005. Based on data from the study, staff recommends increasing the pay grade to a 105, with a minimum hiring rate of $49, $49,000. And Detention Officer 1 employees' salaries would be adjusted by 5%. And this is the side-by-side comparison of the current detention pay plan, pay ranges, and the proposed detention pay ranges. This shows that the Detention 1, 2, and 3, Detentional Officer 1, 2, and 3, would move up by two grades each. The estimated annualized cost to implement the proposed is $2.9 million, which includes fringe and vacancies. The county has an estimated $1.2 million that is carried over and available to use from the July 1 pay plan implementation. So staff are currently reviewing the impact to the law enforcement and the detention series, and will provide the board with affordability considerations in the coming weeks. And with that said, I'll take any questions.
Maybe I just have one. Just want to make sure I'm clear. The deputies and detention officers in the last, and when we did our normal raises allocation, they received nothing at that point, or they received something?
They did not receive anything.
Anything, so it was, everything was delayed until we finished this?
That's right.
Okay. So they're still being paid on what the last year's pay schedule?
That's correct. And I'll say what prompted this study is, you know, we were hearing that a lot of organizations were changing their pay structure, but had not done so yet. They would be doing it, you know, in the first quarter of the new fiscal year, which has now been done, and that's what prompted the study.
Got it. Thank you.
And so the delay in action was in order to make sure that we were actually comparing to the most comparable competitive data?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so do you think that you'll have this ready for us by our next board meeting? The consideration of affordability?
When is the next board meeting, Ashley?
The next board meeting is August 31.
So...
We can definitely try to do that. You know, I, for me personally, I would like to talk with Dudley about some options there, too. I'm not sure when he's returning, but, you know, I would say by the 31st would be good.
Well, I just want to, because we go through this issue of briefing things twice. This is just a discussion item, just kind of, I'm not sure, kind of where it counts in one or two. I don't have a problem going to August 31. I just want to make sure, do we need to do the cycle, or do we just do it?
I think we need to do the cycle, but my question is how quickly we can get that answer, because obviously it'll probably be reported in tomorrow's paper, and so those folks are going to have to sit there for several weeks wondering if we're going to do it or if we're not going to do it. So I'd just like to, but I want it to go through the cycle as we do everything else.
Vice Chair Wizen Hunt, I'll answer that question. We will prepare it for the next cycle. So by the time the next cycle comes around, we'll have the affordability considerations. The manager will be back. I've already had lots of conversations with him, but we're going to be working with our budget director. But that timing of the next cycle, we will be ready to go.
Just to let folks know what to expect and when to expect an answer, right? Thank you.
I think that, well, you get rid of the six. So I think that maybe the, the information that Mr. Watts gave, Commissioner Bessie and I regarding the salary update, including the sheriff's salary analysis, our assumption, once I heard that there was going to be discussion about these updates, that it would include the information that the county manager shared with us even last Thursday. And so maybe it, to the point around the cycle in September or late August, that's when we would also hear information about the sheriff's salary analysis. Because I think, if I recall the conversation correctly, Commissioner Bessie, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there was thought that, can we just have a conversation in regards to whatever is going on over at the sheriff's office regarding salaries, instead of having a conversation about the sheriff's salary analysis versus other positions there, if it all sort of related?
Yes, absolutely. I will prepare some, some things for that.
Yeah, and I will say, Commissioner Woodbury, we have already analyzed that data, provided that data, if that is something that the board would like us to include with the rest of the series that we'll be coming back to you with, as well as affordability. But we have already provided a packet of information regarding our recommendation for that, so we can include that if that is the will of the board.
Could you share that? So I lost the information that, I'll admit, that's, I think it may be in another car, but I have...
No, no problem. Yes, ma'am.
...the information that Dudley gave to me about the analysis.
Yes, ma'am. I will do that.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
Following up on Vice Chairman Whitman's point of letting folks know when we would anticipate the opportunity for action, is I understand that that would have the first briefing on this item at our next meeting on the 31st, the second briefing on the, on September 14, because of the Labor Day holiday week, and the voting meeting anticipated on Thursday, September 21. Am I...
That is correct.
That's correct. Yeah.
That's probably what I said.
I just wanted to give the folks an idea of when it would be voted, all right?
Yeah, this is very unusual to have that much delay, because we got two odd, two-week periods.
Right. I understand.
Any other questions for Shannon? All righty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Deputy County Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Ready for you to jump in now.
All right. So as a reminder, as you mentioned earlier, there is no briefing or meeting next week, so we won't be here next week. You'll have your conference. Then after a full morning session and the second briefing for the August 31 meeting we'll have now, has 23 items, so we'll jump right into that, unless you have other questions for me. All right. Item number one is a public hearing to consider the expenditure of county general funds for an economic development project and authorizing an agreement with the company. Community and Economic Development Director Kyle Haney will brief this item.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Once again, this is, we briefed this last week, but this is economic development, pro economic development incentive for a manufacturer of biological products considering expansion of their headquarters. We will reveal the name of that in two weeks at the meeting, at the actual meeting, but it is a proposed $21 million investment and 50 new jobs with an average salary of $72,000. The proposed incentive is $324,124 over a five-year period, which is approximately 50% of the proposed tax increase. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Kyle?
Thank you.
All right.
Item number two is a resolution to create positions and associated expenses at Forsyth County Department of Social Services in preparation for Medicaid expansion, and this item will be briefed by Ms. Marissa Adams.
Good afternoon, commissioners. As you know, Medicaid expansion has been proposed. On June 16, our county received $756,469.95 in advanced funding in preparation for building out technology and hiring and training for new staff for Medicaid expansion. On July the 26, North Carolina DHHS announced that they were moving forward with Medicaid expansion, dependent upon the North Carolina General Assembly passing a budget, or the decoupling of Medicaid expansion. If that is not passed, the earliest fallback would be December 31. Over approximately 600,000 North Carolinians will be eligible for Medicaid within the ages of 19 to 64, with an income upwards of 138% of the poverty income level. We approximately have 112,000 individuals that receive Medicaid services and look to add an additional 45,000. It is remain, for this purpose, it is the need to add additional staff to Medicaid in the following positions, following 11 positions. One would be a program manager, a program supervisor, one income maintenance, three worker, which we call lead workers, six income maintenance, two workers, and one income maintenance one. If, so we are asking permission to use these funds to proceed in hiring of those individuals. Do you have any questions?
I've got one.
Yes, ma'am.
Will we actually, I noticed that 75% of the state money is being advanced?
Yes.
And so will we get the 25, our 25% back?
If additional funding is, has been stated to be received once expansion is passed.
Yeah, because I just remember the discussion at the legislative level, and I think throughout our County Commissioners Association, is that, that basically there's a promise that we're not going to be paying a bunch out of pocket for that, that the state's going to absorb that. And I know our 200,000 was allowed to get going, sort of set aside, and I'm kind of, that's kind of where, I'm kind of curious about that.
Do you want to help?
Hi, Dr. Martin. My name is Krista Smith. I'm the deputy director, so I manage the budget for DSS. So just to explain, the budget at the state level has not passed yet, as you guys probably are aware, and that's where we expect to see and hear about the actual funding for expansion. Because there is a six... Because there is a six-to-nine-month training time to get a new worker from hire point to ready to process applications, and they're looking at starting, they're hoping to, October 1st. We, the state wanted to be helpful, and what they did was they advanced us what we generally draw down in a year's time, knowing that the likelihood is we'll draw more down, because we're going to be processing more this year. So this advanced Medicaid funding, it represents what is typically 75%. So we will not get our 25% back unless the legislature and the budget says they're going to give us that 25% back. As it stands now, policy is, is that all Medicaid expenses are 75% reimbursable. We've seen them do different things when they roll out new programs, but we have yet to hear anything official.
We'll see. Promises, promises.
Essentially, yes.
Are these positions difficult to approve, to hire?
We have had an increase in hiring in these positions, particularly in Medicaid. I was trying to be proactive upon coming aboard in last September, from previously working from, for the state. So I knew Medicaid was, Medicaid expansion was in the works. So we have been aggressively recruiting. My concern is neighboring counties have already hired for Medicaid expansion positions. So therefore, I have already lost out on the top picks. Guilford County hired 20 and looking to hire 20 more. And speaking with Davie County, even of smaller sizes, counties are moving forward. Davie County converted 208 positions and are hiring two additional income maintenance caseworkers in preparation.
Wow.
Good. Ms. Chairman? Thank you. Oh, sorry.
May I ask again, you gave us the approximate figures of the number of Forsyth residents who participated in the Medicaid program now, and the estimated number who, additional residents who will be eligible after the expansion finally, you know, takes, takes place when the budget's passed? What are those figures again, please?
Currently, we have 112 individuals. That, 112,000, excuse me.
112,000, and the estimated...
It's 45,000.
45,000. Thank you. I, I noticed in, in this morning's paper, it was reported that there were statewide 33,000 people who lost eligibility in July alone. That's on top of 35,000 who lost eligibility in June, and that most of that was for paperwork processing problems. Are we having challenges with staff, and, you know, things like, people didn't, didn't respond to a letter, or they didn't, you know, give, hand in all the right paperwork? Do we have challenges with staff keeping up with, with that now?
No, sir. We have, by policy, we have implemented for the unwinding period, we have to contact the customer using three different modalities. So the state is modality one, they do text messaging and calling to remind individuals that, you know, it's time to research, please update your information. We, by policy, have to send out what we call a notice for information, so that is mailed to the client. Those numbers are true, that a lot have lost eligibility. However, some of those individuals would have remained on roles if Medicaid expansion was already in place.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Thanks. Hope we can find folks.
Item number three are your August 10th minutes. Item number four is a $3,275 amendment to the fiscal year 24 budget ordinance to appropriate funding for the Fan Heat Relief Program for the Department of Social Services, and Cindy Ferkin, DSS fiscal supervisor, will brief this item.
I'm presenting for your consideration an amendment to the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget ordinance to appropriate Operation Fan Heat Relief program funding allocation for the Forsyth County Department of Social Services to continue administration of the OFHR program. Forsyth County has been awarded $3,275 by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Aging and Adult Services Division for the Operation Fan Heat Relief program. These funds are provided by contributions through the Division of Aging and Adult Services to area agencies on aging by Duke Energy Progress, Duke Energy Carolina, and Dominion Resources. There are no county funds involved. We've, with the approval of the Commissioners, we plan to purchase 131 fans at an estimated cost of $25 per fan with this $3,275. And this program runs through the end of October of 2023. We have been able to give 52 fans out prior to this relief program being approved. They were donated by Centenary United Methodist Church, so at least we've been able to give out those 52 fans and hope to give out an additional 131 fans. Any questions?
Are these fans, the box fans, or the oscillating ones?
These are just box fans.
Box fans, okay.
Other questions? Nope. We're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cindy.
Try to beat the heat.
Item number five is a $91,126.54 amendment to the fiscal year 24 budget ordinance to appropriate fund balance received during FY23, and then additional revenue for FY24 from the National Association of County and City Health Officials and Budget Management Analyst Michaela Westbrook will brief this item.
Good afternoon. So as he mentioned, it is a total of $91,000 that need to be appropriated for behavioral health services, and these will be used for implementing overdose prevention strategies at a local level.
Questions for Michaela?
Item number six is Michaela's as well, is an amendment to the FY24 budget ordinance to appropriate $40,000 from the Appalachian Regional Commission.
So this is a grant also for behavioral health services, and these dollars will be used for workplace education and certification.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. Simple.
Item number seven is a resolution authorizing execution of necessary documents to apply for and receive U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Funds totaling $280,000. And it's a split between City and County, and Randy Hunsucker, the sheriff's business manager, is here to brief this item.
Thanks, Damon. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board members. The sheriff's office and Winston-Salem Police Department have been allocated 2023 JAG grant funds in the amount $280,631. The attached resolutions will do two things. One, allow us to apply for and receive the grant funds, and then also authorize in our local agreement to share the funds equally. And that works out to $140,315.50 each. Sheriff's Office will use its portion for continuing to cover the cost of the software platform used by the Real-Time Intelligence Center, which is currently FUSIS. Older JAG grant balances are being used first, because the payments are staggered a little bit. The city proposes to use its share of the grant funds for the installation of a audio-video integration technology solution into the auditorium at the Vivian Burke Public Safety Center. Grant scope modifications will be conducted as per Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Policies, Guidelines, and Procedures. No local matching funds are required or needed, and the application deadline for us is August 31st. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Randy? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Randy. Item number eight is a resolution amending the funding of premium paid to county employees for onsite work performed during the COVID-19 public health emergency and adopting an amended premium pay plan. Our HR Director Shannon Hutchins will brief this item.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. So last December, the board authorized premium pay bonuses through ARPA funding for employees who met the eligibility criteria, and that was for work performed during the declared national COVID-19 public health emergency. Premium pay bonuses were paid out in December 2022, and the final payment was issued in June of this year. The declared national public health emergency was ended, however, on April 10th of this year. So this resolution amends the previous premium pay, premium pay plan to reflect the end of the declared national public health emergency, and it includes a retention bonus funded through the Forsyth County General Fund for eligible employees that were hired on or after April 11th, 2023, and were active on payroll as of June 10th, 2023. And the final premium pay bonus and retention bonuses were paid to eligible employees on June 16th. The total sum for premium pay would not exceed 3.633 million, and the total sum for retention pay, which will be paid through the, or which was paid through the general fund, will not exceed 75,000.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Item number nine is a resolution amending the resolution approving execution of an agreement with Cure Violence Global and approving a violence interruption program using American Rescue Plan Act funds. Deputy County Manager Chantel Robinson will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The agenda item before you is requesting an amendment to the March 3, 2022 resolution that approved the execution of an agreement with Cure Violence Global. Cure Violence Global is the nonprofit organization that is based out of Chicago. At that time, the board authorized a contract with Cure Violence Global in the amount of $1.5 million to implement a violence interruption program. There are some technicalities of the original resolution that we need to correct. Specifically, Cure Violence Global provides technical assistance and does not serve as the implementing entity, and the intent of the original resolution was to provide $1.5 million to various entities for the project as a whole, because Cure Violence Global isn't receiving the $1.5 million alone. So Cure Violence Global was awarded a contract in the total amount of $210,000 for training and technical assistance to help us implement the model. Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods was awarded a contract in the amount of $1,080,398 to serve as the community-based organization responsible for implementing the program. And UNC Greensboro was awarded a contract in the amount of $159,529 to conduct the evaluation and impact study of the program. Additionally, because the city is funding half the program with their general revenue funds, we have also amended the resolution to recognize the $750,000 in revenues from the city, which our Budget Director Kyle Wolf will outline in more detail in the next agenda item. So this is a cleanup item, just to make sure that for the record for ARPA, that we are clear on how that $1.5 million is spent. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Chantel? Thank you.
As Deputy Manager Robinson noted, agenda item number 10 is a $1,630,351 amendment to the Pandemic Response Special Revenue Fund to accept revenue from the City of Winston-Salem and transfer those funds to a budget reserve, and Kyle Wolf, the Budget Director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So, yeah, this is essentially another cleanup item as well. So this amendment is necessary to appropriate the revenue that Ms. Robinson referenced just a second ago from the city of Winston-Salem for their share of the Cure Violence Project, and also to recognize some reversions from projects that have been approved by the Board of Commissioners. Those known reversions include $30,700 from Flywheel, $250,000 from Monarch, $25,000 from Delicious, and $25,000 from Delicious by Shireen. Those were full awards that ultimately those organizations declined funding. And then additionally, there was $573,549 from the premium pay that we just kind of talked about, and $1,102 from funds that had been set aside for the fire engines, after those fire engines have been purchased. So with those reversions and the $750,000 from the city of Winston-Salem, there's $1,630,357, if I can read my writing, that's available to transfer to a budget reserve, which we can also later claim as part of our revenue loss calculation. And as you know, the current budget, in the past two budgets, we've included $6,64,715 for, from our revenue loss reserve of a little over $18 million. And so this year for FY24, this is the final year of that transfer, meaning that staff need to identify ways to cover the loss of that $6 million for our '25 budget. And so we're recommending that that $1,630,351 be used to shore up that gap, to avoid any potential tax increase for FY25. But really what we're doing right now is just setting it aside in the budget reserve. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
I followed what you said, but I guess back in the budget time, when we had several alternative service requests, we had some discussion that there would be, we already knew about some of the ARPA dollars that had not been committed. And we had some discussion that we would probably, some of the things that we purposely, and at least I, I did not support simply because they were likely certainly eligible for some of the slippage ARPA funds that had not been committed. And essentially, I'd have probably, I would have probably voted very differently on the alternative service level request if I had thought that all the available ARPA funds that had not been allocated were going to be rolled in together and go somewhere, which is exactly what this amendment does. So I probably, I have a little heartburn about that.
Okay. It's really all we're doing right now with this, with this item, is just moving...
I got you. You're not, you're not doing anything with it yet, but the implication is, is that it will be a part that we will be doing something with it.
And so I think what we know is there's going to be funds that are going to be reverted, you know, that aren't going to be fully spent. And so this was kind of a way to, again, just kind of shore that up. But I can certainly understand what you're saying, and if that's the direction the board wants to go, then that's absolutely fine. That's, that's the board's prerogative.
Got it. Other questions for Kyle?
I think the manager has individually talked to the Commissioners and basically done a poll of what the Commissioners wanted to do with that money, and I think he got a pretty clear answer.
I'm not quite sure about that. I think I'm in favor with Dr. Martin, that we did have some conversation about utilizing that. But I guess for me, what I'd like to see is what is possibly going to come back from others that we have awarded, that they weren't able to use, so we can have some conversations about that and just kind of put this on hold.
Well, I assume that that'll show up exactly in this amendment? Or does it show up exactly?
No, because really all, the only thing that this amendment is doing are, so there are the known reversions of, you know, essentially, 200, almost, almost $300,000, a little over $300,000 from three organizations who have declined their funding, which were Flywheel, Monarch, Delicious by Shireen. There were some other ones that have already been reverted as well, but those were used as part of the round two...
Yes.
Round two allocations. And then there's the additional, you know, $500,000 from premium pay that was not used, and then $1,000 from the fire engines, basically, that was left over out of the $2.8 million that was set aside for them. All but $1,100 was, was used. So the other reversions that could come in would happen as projects get completed, and so that'll be, you know, much, it'll be down the road. It'll be down the road on those. This is really just doing the ones that we know about right now.
Those ARPA programs or organizations were supposed to utilize that funding by when?
December of 20, December 24.
December 24, so at least maybe mid-June, next June, we would have kind of a kaleidoscope in terms of how much they've spent.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, I know that we did, it's, you know, it was a small grouping of, it was like a... like, I believe it was Dudley, Chantel, myself, Damon, Ayesha, some other, I think, Kim Shore, and some other staff. We kind of went through the list and decided, and talked about who do we, you know, how are funds being spent? Do we have concerns with organizations not being able to spend those? And so I think there is some, there's another list out there, but what this item is doing is really just the ones that we know about.
Be curious what the order of magnitude is of the suspected future unspent ARPA funds.
We can get that for you. I don't, I don't have that off me.
That would be helpful.
I think for us, a lot of those organizations surrounded the ones that were hiring staff. So we know, right, if they're being reimbursed based on having staff and they haven't hired them yet, that's where our biggest concern on slippage will be. And so we are monitoring that on a monthly basis, and certainly can, Kimberly Shore and Ayesha Cardle can provide those reports as we see it. But just so you know, from our perspective, that's where the highest risk organizations are.
Got it. Thank you.
And if you'll read this last paragraph, I think it will show you what the Board has directed Dudley to do, which is to hold that in, in the reversions and to, it's a priority for us to avoid a property tax, property tax, tax increase in '24, '25. Is the last paragraph.
I'll read it. Any other questions for, no, I got it. Any other questions for Kyle?
Thank you.
Chairman, I will say this, before I vote on it next week, that we need to have some additional conversations with Dudley relative to the consensus on the Board around that. Last paragraph. Thank you.
Board, right. Item number 11 is a resolution awarding a not-to-exceed $48,533 contract to Capital Marketing Solutions to provide ballot printing and packaging services. I see Kim Bussey here from the Budget Office to read this.
Kimberly Bussey, Budget Management. I'm here on behalf of Tim Suji. He's away on business today in Raleigh. So this agenda item is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between Forsyth County Board of Elections and Capital Marketing Solutions LLC to provide ballot printing and packaging services for the conduct of elections in Forsyth County in fiscal year '24. This not-to-exceed contract, as Damon mentioned, is $48,533. Capital Marketing Solutions is one of four companies that are certified by the State Board of Elections to, or as an approved ballot printing company. And Capital Marketing Solutions provided the lowest informal bid of the two that did provide bids to Forsyth County. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Questions for Kimberly.
Item number 12 is also Kimberly's item. It's a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement between Forsyth County and the state of North Carolina on behalf of the Department of Agricultural and Consumer Services for Forest Services at $194,500. And I'll let Kimberly say the rest there.
That's right. So I'm here now on behalf of Cooperative Extension. This item is a contract with the state of, I'm sorry, with Cooperative Extension and the state of North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, North Carolina Forest Service, for Forsyth County's share of personal services, operating expenditures, office space rentals, and capital expenses for county ranger, assistant county ranger, a forestry clerk, a temporary positions on an as-needed basis. The total cost, as Damon said, for this contract is $194,500, and the county's share is $77,800. These funds were included in the FY '24 budget, and I'm happy to answer any questions about this agreement you may have.
Questions for Kimberly.
Thank you, Kimberly. Item number 13 is a resolution authorizing the payment of postage funds to Pitney Bowes Global Financial Services in the amount of $450,000 annually. And Kirby Robinson, the Deputy General Services Director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board. Appreciate you having me today. As a background on this item, General Services operates the county's mailroom. Pretty much every piece of outbound county mail comes through that mailroom, and in fiscal '24, we processed over half a million pieces of mail. So to do that in an expeditious manner, we lease a postage meter machine from Pitney Bowes to fund the postage that runs through that meter. We either have to deposit funds in a reserve account that's authorized by the Postal Service or open a line of credit with the vendor, which we don't want to do. In the past, we've done that again by making regular deposits into this reserve account. The vendor does not take a fee or profit from those funds. They're spent just on postage costs. So while it looks like we're paying Pitney Bowes a ton of money, it's actually paid to the Postal Service. It's a pass-through of the county's mail meter machine. So again, those are spent just on postage costs. This item before you authorizes expenditures in varying amounts up to $450,000 a year through the term of the postage meter lease. So if we were to get a new lease after May of 2027, we'd come back to you because those payments could theoretically be made to a different company. I'm happy to answer any questions the Board has.
Any questions for Kirby?
Thank you, Kirby. Item number 14 is a resolution awarding a $199,739 contract for moving services for the new courthouse. James Anderson, the county's construction manager, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The item before you awards a contract to Sudath Relocation Systems of Charlotte to provide moving services for the new courthouse project. Movers were pre-qualified by an RFQ process advertised by City-City Purchasing, with responses being received on June 16th from Cabro, Core Lence, City Transfer and Storage, Sudath Relocation Systems of Charlotte, and the Armstrong Company. General Services staff, STAN Tech, and the manager's office reviewed the responses. Firms were judged on their experience, staff experience, specific experience with file-and-order moves, and their capacity to perform a move on the scale of the courthouse, their move-execution plan, and their MWB/hub participation plan. Out of that, Cabro, Sudath Relocation Systems of Charlotte, and the Armstrong Company were identified as qualified firms. Subsequently, a request for proposals was issued with responses due August 8th, 2023, with Sudath submitting a proposed fee of $199,759.35, and Armstrong submitted a fee proposal of $250,917. It is recommended that a contract be awarded to Sudath Relocation Systems of Charlotte in an amount not to exceed $199,759.35. The resolution also authorizes the design and construction manager design change orders in an amount not to exceed $25,000. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Just a curiosity question. There were five bidders. Three did, were not recommended even to submit a proposal. Were any of those three from here, just out of curiosity?
Core Lence, they're located out of Clemmons. They did not have the capacity to take on the move or the experience with file-and-order moves. And then also, City Transfer is also a local mover. They were non-responsive to follow-up questions from the RFQ, so we were not able to prequalify them.
And actually, three out of the five, we did prequalify, and one of those chose not to submit a bid.
Okay. Any other questions for James?
Getting down to the, getting down to the nitties on this.
It is.
So James has the next two items as well. So item number 15 is a resolution authorizing execution of a $93,643.78 agreement with Duke Energy LLC to provide electric power for the new courthouse.
As Damon said, this item authorizes a service agreement with Duke Energy. The $93,643.78 is for the extra facilities charge due to the new courthouse being served by two transformers. Duke Energy charges an extra facilities charge to provide and maintain the additional equipment. There is a, typically a monthly payment for that. For this particular case, the monthly payment would have been $576.92. The lump sum option will save the county $141,739.58 over the term of the agreement. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I have a curiosity question. Do we request to be served by two transformers?
We did. So that way, the, the building is set up with the electrical switchgear and what they call a main tie-main setup. So if something happens to one of Duke's transformers or they have to pull it down for maintenance, we can switch the building over to run off of the redundant feed, so that way a critical facility stays up.
So have we requested, I'm just, I'm thinking of the detention center. Is it on a, on a dual feed like that?
It is.
Same kind of thing. Do we have any other buildings that are on that dual transformer?
Public Safety Center, this facility, and just the courthouse, I think, are the only ones that are on, on redundant transformation.
And another just curious question. My accounting day's coursework is a long time ago, but I think it's, whatever is present value of the dollar or future value of the dollar issue, how does that compare making a lump sum payment now for, as we go, you know, you see, I'm getting at, the difference is really not exactly what you said. I'm kind of curious how, how far off that is. Because they lock in that 500 and something dollars a month, 546 or something, for the life of the, for the term. So that's not going up.
That's correct.
It's worth a whole bunch less when it's paid 30 years from now. And I'm, so I'm just kind of, you know, kind of curious. I mean, it seems like any model with a, with a fairly even low, you know, inflation rate that's put into, in your assumptions, it might be cheaper to pay the monthly.
Mr. Chairman, I calculated that. I believe it was six and a half percent.
Is it future value or present value?
You use the, you use the interest rate to discount it.
Ah, okay. Okay. Got it. Okay. Any other questions for James on that?
So James has one more. So item number 16 is a resolution selecting and awarding a contract totaling $158,100 to REI Engineers Incorporated for professional design services for the Forsyth County Department of Forest Services roofing project, re-roofing project.
The item before you selects and awards a contract to REI Engineers Incorporated for professional design services for the DSS re-roofing project. The DSS roof has reached the end of its service life and requires replacement. $2 million has been budgeted from our capital renewal program for the replacement of the roofing system. REI Engineers was selected by an RFQ process advertised by City-City Purchasing on April 10th, 2023, with responses being received from Atlas Engineering, Raymond Engineering, REI Engineers, Wolf Trail Engineering, SKA Consulting Engineers, and TerraCon Consultants on April 28th, 2023. Responses were reviewed by a selection committee comprised of General Services staff. Firms were scored based upon the firm's history, their staff experience, and adherence to the RFQ requirements. The selection committee identified REI Engineers as the best qualified firm for the project and have negotiated a not-to-exceed fee of $158,100, which includes $148,100 or 7.4% of the construction budget for basic services and an additional services allowance of $10,000. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I have the same question. You've got a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of firms listed there. And how many actually qualified for the bid, to bid actually? Did they all actually bid?
All, all of those firms had submitted a response to the RFQ. SKA is going to be the most local out of Greensboro. The others are from Charlotte and the Raleigh area.
So help me understand why REI wins, wins that.
REI was selected based upon their experience with the type of roof systems that we're dealing with. And then also, we have some challenging issues where we have exterior walls tying into the roof systems, and they also have a really good exterior envelope engineering staff. So they were, in our opinion, the best fit for the project.
Other questions for James?
As I recall, state law doesn't allow us to get bids for the cost from firms that are competing for the award for professional services. We're, we're supposed to pick who we think is the best qualified firm and then go into contract negotiations, right?
That's correct, and that's the process we followed for the selection.
Any other questions? Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. The next four items are Cindy Furkin, the Cindy Furkin Show. Number 17 is a resolution authorizing execution of a not-to-exceed $81,000 contract between Forsyth County and Senior Services for the purpose of providing home-delivered meals, frozen meals, and congregate lunch program services.
Good afternoon again. The first item for presentation is regarding a resolution to authorize contracts with senior services. We have two. We've had a community partnership for over 25 years with senior services, and they have provided adult daycare, adult day health, and the Meals on Wheels program for us. And we are requesting a resolution to authorize execution of a contract between Forsyth County and Senior Services for home-delivered meals, frozen meals, and congregate lunch program services for an estimated 115 individuals. The average number of meals to be provided each month is 1,037 at a cost of $7.10 per meal. The contract is not to exceed $81,000, and this will allow senior services to provide 11,400 meals annually to adult citizens of Forsyth County. The contract includes $10,125 in federal funds and $70,875 in county funding. The fiscal year '23 budget was 81,000 as well, and expenditures totaled $76,984.84. The adult division staff members determine the need, the eligibility, and they provide senior services with a client service plan. The eligibility for the services is based on social services block grant eligibility criteria. Monthly invoices, including customers served and daily unit billing, are verified by the adult division supervisors. The invoices are processed by the business office, and the contracts are monitored for encumbrance and to ensure compliance by the providers. We are also requesting to extend this contract to additional one-year terms for an amount not to exceed 81,000 for fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 for a total not to exceed three years. Any questions?
Questions, Cindy?
Cindy, I do have one question relative to the split with senior services in Mount Zion Baptist Church. Is there some type of mapping that is created so that there's no overlap? So who's responsible for what area or region of the county?
No, with the, that's my, my second item.
Oh, sorry.
That's fine. No, no, no. Adult daycare and adult day health. Senior Services is the only facility in Forsyth County that is licensed to provide adult day health.
Okay.
They also provide adult daycare, and Mount Zion is only licensed for adult daycare.
Fair enough. Okay. Thank you.
So that item, number 18, is a resolution authorizing execution of a $135,753 contract between Forsyth County and Senior Services to provide adult daycare and adult day health services, of which the county is responsible for 12.5% or $16,969. If there's anything else Cindy Furkin wants to add.
We are requesting a resolution to authorize execution of a contract between Forsyth County and Senior Services to provide adult daycare and adult day health services for an estimated 35 individuals, providing an average of 170 units or days of service per month for adult daycare and an average of 30 units or days of service per month for adult day health. The contract rate is not to exceed $60 per day per adult for adult daycare and not to exceed $70 per day for adult day health. The total units or days annually will average 2,200 for both services. The contract ends May the 17th, 2024, to allow DSS the ability to issue payment by May 31st and to claim reimbursement against the fiscal year '24 state in-home services fund allocation. Total contract is not to exceed $135,753 for fiscal year '24, and the agreement consists of 62,148 federal funds, which is 45.78%, 56,636 in state funds, 41.7%, and 12.5% in county funds totaling $16,969. The total allocation is determined by DHHS, Division of Social Services Budget Office. This is done annually, and the fiscal '24... This is done annually, and the fiscal '24 annual budget amount is $155,753 and is split approximately 87% to senior services and 13% to Mount Zion. And the division is based on the size of the facility and the ability to offer the adult daycare versus adult daycare and adult day health. And as I stated before, senior services is the only licensed provider in Forsyth County for adult day health services. And both Mount Zion and senior services do offer the adult daycare. The fiscal year '23 budget was $190,756, and the expenditures were $177,946. So the budget was reduced for fiscal year '24 by about 18%. And there again, the staff members of DSS Adult Division conduct assessments of need and eligibility, and they provide senior services with the client service plan and scheduling. The plans are monitored and adjusted based on need. Invoices are verified, processed for payment by the business office, and contracts are monitored for encumbrance and to ensure contract compliance. Any questions?
Just one.
Where is the facility or facilities that senior services operates for the adult daycare and adult day health services?
It's at the William Tab. Can you help me with the address?
Tab Williams.
Senior Center. I don't know the address, but they are in Winston-Salem.
On Cloverdale, Tab Williams, right?
I wondered, I thought that was on Cloverdale. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
All right. The board's okay. Item number 19 is a resolution authorizing execution of a not to exceed $40,000 agreement between Forsyth County and Exchange Club Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse in North Carolina to provide permanency planning review and child team facilitation for families involved in child welfare services. Cindy again.
I've got two items here, two contracts. The first one, both of these will be a resolution authorizing the execution of agreement between Forsyth County and the Exchange Club Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse of North Carolina Incorporated, also known as Parenting Path. The first item is permanency planning review and child and family team facilitation. We did reach out for rate quotes from four agencies, and you can see the large difference between the Exchange Club and Hope Counseling and Consulting. And of course, these firms have to be licensed, properly licensed, and have trained staff according to the requirements of DHHS to provide the services. Also, Exchange Club operates from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday. The other two, Family Services Incorporated and Voices for Children, Nurturing Family. Family Services right now don't have staff to offer these services at this time, and Voices for Children was non-responsive. Again, the services shall be provided by trained staff who have met the requirements for PPR and CFT facilitation in compliance with North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services standards set to facilitate high-risk cases. The contract amount is not to exceed $40,000, which consists of 25,000 federal funds, 5,000 in state funds, and $10,000 in county funds. And there again, we're also requesting the right to extend two additional one-year terms for an amount not to exceed 42,500 for the 2024-2025 fiscal year and an amount not to exceed 45,000 for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. For the 2023 fiscal year, the monthly average was 150 sessions, and we served 80 families. That's a lot of children because you've got several families that may have three or four children that are in child welfare services. Any questions?
Any questions, Cindy?
All right. Item number 20 is Cindy's last item. It's a resolution authorizing execution of a not to exceed $30,000 agreement between Forsyth County and Exchange Club Center for the Prevention of Child Abuse of North Carolina to provide structured supervised visitation sessions and transportation for families involved in child welfare services.
Again, the same company, also known as Parenting Path. We did reach out for rate quotes, and you can see there's not a lot of difference in the price range. One plus for the Exchange Club is they are open and serving customers from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM on Saturdays and from noon to 8:00 PM on Sundays. And their rate remains the same seven days a week. I mean, that gives us an opportunity for these supervised visitations for parents involved in the child welfare system to be able not to have to miss work. They can come and have visitation sessions with their children on either Saturday or Sunday. The Exchange Club Center will deliver all functions and activities to provide structured supervised visitation sessions for juveniles who are in the legal custody of Forsyth County Department of Social Services, and they provide transportation for families involved in the child welfare services. This is court ordered, and transportation is included in the hourly rate. There's not an additional transportation or mileage fee paid for their services. The contract amount is not to exceed 30,000, which consists of 22,500 in federal funds and 7,500 in county funds. We're also requesting the right to extend two additional one-year terms with a not to exceed amount of 31,800 fiscal year '25 and 33,708 for fiscal year '26 for a maximum of three years' duration. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions for Cindy? Cindy, excuse me.
One with apologies. I'm sorry, did you say that Exchange Club is operating as Parenting Path? Is that the?
They were formerly known as.
Formerly known as, so now it's, okay.
And they're located right here in Winston-Salem on Northwest Boulevard.
I wanted to make sure I was tracking who the organization was over time. That's the one I'm familiar with. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Very thorough reports on all four of those, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
We've typically done these extra, these three-year sort of agreements. Three out of four, I think, were three-year agreements.
Three-year, maximum of three-year. The only contract that I have right now that is not to be extended is the senior services, adult daycare and adult day health. And the reason we cannot extend it further is because the funding is strictly based on an allocation. The state decides the allocation, and we have no idea from year to year, are they going to increase the allocation, decrease the allocation? So we can't put an amount not to exceed in a resolution for continuing years. So it's one of those items that we will have to brief each year depending on the allocation.
Thank you, Cindy.
You have a question, Cindy. We're good?
Good.
Thank you. The next two items are property matters. I asked Kirby Robinson to come up. Item number 21 is a resolution authorizing the sale of a seven-tenths of an acre portion of county-owned real property located at 400 West Haynesville Road to the NC DOT. But I'll let Kirby speak to this item.
All right. Good afternoon again. They say it's always the small ones that cause you the most trouble, and my goodness, this has certainly met that standard. So as background, the NC DOT is planning a road widening project for Haynesville Road, and they have offered to buy a .7-acre portion of county-owned property located at 400 West Haynesville Road. Again, they're planning to widen the road there. They would also install a traffic circle at the intersection of Haynesville and Museum Drive. That subject property has been valued by an independent appraiser at $112,000, almost $113,000. And that includes consideration for the land, but also for replacement paving, signage, and landscaping. That offer has been pending since August of 2021. So we're actually about a week away from the two-year anniversary. That's very exciting. And so we've worked with the State Parks Office and the National Park Service since that time to relocate a portion of the conservation easement that's currently on the property. And you can see, you know, on the aerial there, that is the Collidia North property. The whole thing is restricted, of course. But the area in red is really the right-of-way property that we're talking about here. It's the .7 acres of the NC DOT. So in July, the National Park Service did authorize the county to relocate that portion of the restriction to Doral Drive, which the board recently acquired. And the proceeds from this sale would go to pay a portion of the acquisition cost of Doral Drive if the board authorizes the sale. Happy to answer any questions the board has.
Where's your, follow this transact? Where's access point to the properties that we currently have?
So the traffic circle, so right now, you can come in and you can go in two different ways. The traffic circle, of course, will go here. You can see where it's going to take a chunk of the property there. Part of that $113,000 involves the DOT just repaving our access in. I understand that the existing access will remain relatively the same, but they'll just connect it somehow in with their road. I could certainly get you the specific plan on that.
There's a yellow line that looks like south of that. Maybe I haven't turned around on the picture.
You're good. This is Museum Drive, and this is Haynesville. So you can turn in here, and I believe you can turn in here to come into our parking lot. So the traffic circle will go here, and as I understand it, they're going to come in and repave that access. What the exact, you know, way that would look like afterwards, I'm not sure. But I do know that, you know, that's included in the acquisition costs.
But it's only one entry exit afterwards.
I, my understanding is that we will have the same level of access to the property that we do now. I'm not sure, again, how that would look. I can't help to get the specific plan on that. I understand the question. I'm not sure I could fully answer that right now, but I can get that for you. I mean, there's, you know, there's two ways to turn in the parking lot, but you got one main, again, off Museum Drive here. So we'll still be able to get in off of Museum Drive, whether there'll be two turn-ins as there are now or one. I'm not sure. My understanding was there would still be two.
Yeah, that part of the road that actually goes down, it's kind of like a service road next to the building. I don't, I can't remember if, yeah, it goes, does it actually go back out to Museum Drive? Is it actually, I guess it does. I think it does way down there, but it's not a, I mean, it is like a access road.
It is. You can go down to the maintenance shops there. I picked my kid up from camp on that road. So you can still get to the museum area as well off of that.
I was just thinking of the future of what that site might become. Probably those entrance, entry ways are really important. Entry exit ways are important, but I guess that could be reconfigured if something happens. There's a good bit of elevation change, as I recall, between the building and that lower, if you will, access point.
It does. It slopes down pretty good. I think our general thought is that with a potential future industrial use, a traffic circle will actually be a benefit to selling the site there because right now, the road, I mean, you sort of take your life in your own hands when you turn out on the road in different parts.
Oh, yes, terrible.
As that's, oh, yes, terrible.
It's terrible.
If, as safety is improved there, it's actually going to benefit the county's property in the future.
Kirby, so that I'm not confused across the street, but you can't see it in photo, that would be that old Cyrilly buildings?
I believe it is. It's got, you know, 50 different depots and all that. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Other questions for Kirby?
Item number 22 is also Kirby's item. It's a resolution declaring certain county-owned personal property surplus and authorizing its disposition by public electronic auction using liquidity services operations.
Thank you, sir. So the items listed on your attached list represent a combination of furniture, fixtures, and equipment that are normal to our sort of personal property auction process. With one exception, it includes the addition of some cedar logs. So it's sort of a new, different, and exciting thing on the list that are surplus to the needs of the county. The, this action asks that you declare those items surplus, authorize us to sell them on the online auction site known as GovDeals. And if folks are interested, they can view the items by appointment by contacting us at 703-2284 between September 5th and September 15th. Our auction, if you authorize it, will go live on September 11th and run through September 25th.
Was these logs something you was going to use and didn't, or what's the story on that?
Part of the timber management project at Horizons. And so I think they were part, when they cut in that sort of haul road into the property, they were in the way, and I'm not sure if the logger stacked them up just figuring that we would have a use for them. But they, we didn't, we did not pay them for it because they weren't weighed as part of their haul. So they're there, and they smell good, and they're ready to have somebody do something with them.
How big a diameter are they?
About like that. A good fence post type of log, about 20 of them.
Good thing it's cedar logs, if they've been laying our lawn.
They're very, they're fresh. And so we, if you'll notice, I'm glad you brought that up. I meant to mention this. Through the first briefing, they were actually not on your list. And so I, they've been added since the first briefing. I hope that's okay. And it was from a timeliness issue because they actually were cut recently. And as the logger left Horizons, we noticed they were there. And so we wanted to go ahead and move them through the disposal process. On your hard copy, you may notice that there is a Kubota tractor listed. That is not part of the official sale. That was a paperwork error that we've corrected, and we generally funnel those items once we make sure they're surplus to the needs of the entire organization into the auto auction. You have to buy the tractor if you want to use the logs. But no, it's not, it's not part of the sale.
Well, them things is orange. Don't protect the cure about that. Not the Kubota orange, jealous chammers, orange, you're lucky.
Any other questions for Kirby?
It's not an electric tractor. We're not interested.
Thank you. We're looking at some electric zero turns right now. And so I don't recall any cords, but we'll let you know.
Thank you, Kirby. The last item on the agenda is a resolution approving vehicle tax refunds. And so these are all your agenda items for the August 31st meeting. So if the board is agreeable, there's a closed session motion also.
Okay. I didn't, yeah, see that. Good. So before we go into closed session, I do want to make one recognition of our winning and successful Veterans Cup First Annual Trivia Contest, which I thought was about veterans and government trivia, but it included all kinds of trivia. And we actually had five members there. In fact, I guess three of them are in this room with Chantel Robinson, Gordon Watkins, and Damon Centers Pratt. But we also had our county manager Dudley Watts, and we also had Ed Campbell. Appreciate the five of them participating. And were there 18 to 20 teams? This is a big group. This is a big group.
It was more than that.
Might have been 30.
It was a bunch of people.
Might have been 30.
It's a bunch of people.
The picture, I got a picture of the scorecard, and it was so, I didn't blow it up big enough. So about 30, 30 groups, including the city Winston-Salem, a number of some other organizations outside the county. And to win that was actually pretty amazing. 100 questions and a number of categories lasted several hours. And I will say, just from some conversation with individual team members, that our county attorney Gordon Watkins was the MVP of the table. So we may have to buy a special, maybe Dudley can make a special frame kind of thing for the MVP. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you for participating. And as I said to you all, I was really sorry that I was where I was instead of with you, so.
Gordon carried us with his knowledge of music. They had presidents and all kinds of things. It was good.
By the way, we have the answer to the question from this morning that is the Strategic Hazard Intervention Espionage and Logistics Directory.
Shield.
We needed you in our team.
Yeah, we needed you. We needed you.
By the way, could you use your phones during your answer time? Or is it not enough time?
Nope. No phones allowed.
Whoa. Did you have to put them in a bass number, just to, like checking your weapon or something? All right. That's great. If there's any other, no other comments, we're ready for a motion for closed session, and maybe you could read us what that is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I need to ask the board to consider a motion to go into closed session to discuss a matter relating to the location or expansion of industries. closed session to discuss a matter relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the areas served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations pursuant to the provisions of North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11a4. And since there is no other business to come before the board at this meeting, following the closed session, the meeting will be adjourned.
Mr. Ploward made a motion. I'll second it. Any discussion? In my favor, please say aye, aye.